Okay, it is seven o'clock and I would like to call this special meeting of Kimberly City Council for Monday, November the third, two order, held here on the homelands and peoples. Do we have any late items? Hearing none, could I have a mover to adopt the agenda? Counselor McCain moves, Counselor McGuire seconds, all those in favor. That motion is carried. So we don't, because it's special meeting, we don't have any minutes from previous that we need to, that we need to accept. So before getting into the report, I just want to talk a little bit about kind of how we're going to proceed here tonight. So it's important to note that this is not a public meeting, so that the only, the only person outside of council that is going to be speaking this evening will be the proponent, who will start with a presentation of what it is they're intending to do to council. And then council will have questions for both the proponent and staff. And once those questions have been exhausted, council will have a discussion and the discussion will continue until there's no new information, comments, or questions to be gathered. We don't want to kind of circle around on, on the same things. And then following that, we'll call the question on the motion on the floor. So all of that is clear, any questions? Go ahead, Jim.
Just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, just semantics, but it is a public meeting, of course, but it's not a,
Public hearing, I beg your pardon, yeah. Not a public hearing, we are in a public meeting. Thanks, Jim, I appreciate that. Okay, so the, the motion on the floor is that council received for discussion, the staff report as itemized in your agenda. Mover please. Counselor McGuire moves and Counselor McCain seconds. Okay, first up, we have Jason Williams, who is representing J-Mont Developments, the proponent, and Jason has a presentation that he would like to provide counsel. You gonna, are you gonna move the slides?
My flipping the slide here.
Hopefully.
Well, we'll see.
Try it.
I will say how it goes. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff, I'm Jason Williams with J-Mont and appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. So I'll be speaking tonight representing the owner of the property. Okay, lots on this slide here, but just a little history on the building, the Ghost Rider Building and vacant lands were purchased by Jack Carter B.C. Lands Limited in 2021 for about five million. It's purchased as a GM dealership along with future development lands. Supply chain interruptions following COVID prevented GM from being able to supply adequate inventory of new vehicles. The site was permanently closed in 2023. Yamaha Motorsports identified the Kimberly Cranbrook area as an opportunity and we had a vacant building. The decision was to mitigate losses and open Ghost Rider Yamaha in the vacant building, maintaining a business presence in the community as well as an employer. Should be noted that in the six months between closing GM and opening Yamaha, we attempted to find a party interested in industrial lands. The lands were listed on the MLS, but we were unsuccessful in finding any interested party. Currently, Ghost Rider Yamaha is underperforming as the overhead is too high for Yamaha to handle in the entire building. With additional investment by developing the vacant lands into a high-quality commercial plaza, we are not only preserving our initial equity, but maintaining the value of the property over time. With initial equity stabilized, we vision a scenario that Yamaha could pay a fair market rent for the space they are utilizing in the building as well as an opportunity to further demise the building, creating spaces available for rent to other businesses. I'll figure this out eventually.
That was one slide. Okay, Will.
But there we go.
Jasmine can turn the slides here, Jason.
Okay, yeah, to summarize, the ownership group is committed to further investment in the community, but we need the support of council. This is a project we believe will bring meaningful economic benefit to Kimberly while complementing the industrial growth already happening in the area. So on the project overview, Ghost Rider Plaza, as we know, is located on Highway 95A, one of the most visible and active corridors in the area. The plan is for a modern service-oriented commercial development that meets both local and visitor needs. We're envisioning uses like fuel, food services, retail, and other amenities. We're including EV charging stations and possible connectivity to the city's pathway network to support active and sustainable transportation. The idea is to make this a welcoming gateway to Kimberly, one that fits the community's character while providing needed services to the immediate area out there. Slide three. Thank you. Economic benefits, from an economic standpoint, Ghost Rider Plaza represents a direct investment into Kimberly's future. It'll create local construction jobs right away and permanent employment, what it, once it's operational. The project will expand the city's commercial tax base, which helps fund community improvements and services. Beyond that, the commercial space encourages complementary businesses, everything from service providers, light industrial and manufacturing. It's a project that strengthens both the local economy and investor confidence in Kimberly. By far. Complementing industrial growth. One of the real strengths of this location is its relationship with Kimberly's existing and future industrial areas. Industrial, industrial businesses rely on nearby commercial amenities, places for staff to eat, refuel, or pick up supplies. By creating a high-quality commercial hub next to this corridor, we're supporting those existing businesses and making the area even more attractive for future light industrial development. I know Brad's here tonight as well and he's got the land behind us and he's got a, wants to move forward with some light industrial development as well. But would like to see some commercial at the front. In short, Ghost Rider Plaza isn't competing with industrial uses, it's complementing and enabling them. Catalyst for the future of the, this is one we talk about here. One of the most exciting parts about new project like this is that they tend to create momentum. When people see investment in progress, it builds confidence. We've seen it on the communities, once a high-quality development gets underway, it sparks new interest in surrounding lands, encourages property owners to reinvest and brings in new businesses. Ghost Rider Plaza can serve as a catalyst, helping to shape the next chapter of Kimberly's growth story. Six, community environmental considerations. We're also committed to making sure Ghost Rider Plaza is designed with Kimberly's identity environmental, environment in mind. That means architectural landscaping that reflects the community's mountain character, attention to sustainability and practical features like EV charging and bicycle-friendly design. We're planning stormwater management systems and green spaces to handle runoff responsibly, drought-tolerant landscaping. We'll continue to work closely with staff to ensure site access and layout are well-integrated with surrounding infrastructure. Yeah, summary, so to summarize, Ghost Rider strengthens Kimberly's commercial base, complementing nearby industrial growth, create jobs and tax revenue and support the city's broader economic vision. Our team at J-Mont Developments is excited to continue collaborating with council and staff as we move forward. See this as an opportunity not just to add services, but to contribute to Kimberly's ongoing success and reputation as a vibrant, forward-looking community. Thank you, thank you for your time and consideration this evening. We're proud of this proposal and confident Ghost Rider Plaza will be a great addition to Kimberly. Happy to ask, answer any questions you may have.
All right, thanks, Jason.
Yes.
Counsel. Questions or comments? All right, you get off easy. Counsel, any questions for staff? This was a very lengthy staff report. Confident everybody has read it, and if you've got any specific questions for staff before we move into discussion, now would be the time. Go ahead, Diana. Let's start. Well, let's start and see where we go.
Nothing sinister. I just, I did go through the report pretty extensively. It's a wonderful report, thank you for the level of detail and I appreciate that. So just because I wasn't involved in all of the conversations about previous iterations of things and to ensure that I am understanding everything correctly, I do want to just ask a couple, a couple pages worth of questions about it. So it just says the preliminary site data, it's 11% building and 89% not building, so that's like asphalt, maybe a little bit of landscaping, etc.
Yeah, and that, keep in mind, that's just going off the preliminary site plan that's been provided and quite likely that plan will change somewhat if the project moves ahead.
Okay, so just to confirm, that big swath of trees, that's going to go away?
Inevitably, most or all of those trees would be removed.
Okay. Okay, and then on the bottom of the page, it talks about the scale and scope. So to confirm, this is a far more substantial development than what was being proposed in 2023?
I mean, I think it's larger in site area. It's very similar, I guess, overall in terms of the mix of uses, there's, there's, I guess, more restaurant space at this time, but again, probably subject to change by, by permanent stage.
But the other one was just like one of each, right? And this is multiples of.
And had some retail as well, yeah.
Right, okay. And then it says the, on page three, it talks about recently received upgrades in the area. To confirm, we're talking sewage upgrades, water main upgrade, service upgrades?
Yes, that's correct. So the, the site was previously serviced with water and recently the sewer upgrade was established for the entirety of 314.
305.
305, sorry, thank you.
Okay, I heard, you can confirm or deny this, was there a grant for that?
Yes, that's correct.
And what were the parameters of that grant?
I don't recall the details, I'm not sure if Jim has any recollection of that, but.
Okay. Has that been kicking around for a while?
Kicking around.
Like, we applied for that grant a really long time ago and didn't get it, finishing it until.
I think the, the actual infrastructure upgrades happened a couple of years ago, 2022, 2023, I think, I believe, or 2024.
So the grants done reported all that?
Yep, yeah, it's all.
Okay. And then there's some text about the current nature of the development. There's some commentary around additional light industrial requests, but things not sort of coming to fruition. Just to confirm, is that people who are sort of like looking for a service bay that's kind of all ready to go, that they can just put their operation in, or is this people who are looking to build from the ground up?
A mixture of both. So at the, the planning desk, we've definitely received a lot of inquiries surrounding individuals, primarily on the entrepreneurial side of things, looking for sort of a maker space or garage space where they can evolve their business out of. And then on the, the other side, we're building new buildings from the ground up, we have received and been working through multiple different applications. One such did come forward a couple of years ago, I believe it was, received a development permit back in 2022 or 23, if memory serves correct, but they never did actually move forward with the construction there. And then we have received other applications that we are in the, the pre-planning process of to look at similar type developments, which would effectively be multiple bays of garage space or workshop space.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that makes sense. Those are expensive builds, so I get it. So, and then on page four, it says there's four undeveloped lots that are serviced right now, that's all that's available that's fully serviced, ready to go?
So I believe that that calculation was the, the sort of remainder, so.
Okay.
Effectively, yes, for fully serviced lots with frontage that are otherwise undeveloped currently.
But they're not for sale, they're all owned?
That's correct, except for the, well, my understanding is that the parcel is currently under contemplation. We were looking at, earlier and they, they are listed there, but that, that's exclusive to this property, which is the entirety of the property, including the dealership space.
Okay, okay. And so then just a little further lounge down, it talks about the bench lands, and so this is before my time, so I just want to confirm. We're not talking, when we talk about the bench lands in this context, are we talking about the stuff that's on the same side as the transfer station or on the other side of the transfer station?
On the other side of the transportation, I might.
Yeah, the, the bench lands is like above Marysville across from the transfer station.
So that really nice, like beautiful view above the rails to trails where you can go running and throw up because you've just gone up the hill, that's that kind of, that, we would call that the bench lands?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, that's what, but that's sort of what we're referring to, too. And then it's also, there's a comment in here about environmental assessment, so that has never been done on that?
There's been lots of environmental assessment work in the past, but there's still outstanding work to be completed on that site.
So it wouldn't be ready to go like right away?
It's not ready to go right away, no.
What would be the timeframe on that?
That's challenging, there, there's, I mean, we've been working away at the environmental compliance part for, for quite a while, not so much recently. And, you know, it's always been of a moving target with, with the requirements for, for, for the certificate of compliance. But so there's that part of it, which is, you know, probably a couple of years of work, just judging from other sites. And then, of course, there's servicing and all that stuff that has to go along.
So something that I heard that was through the sort of rumor mill, so who knows what's true about this, but was that there was like endangered plant species and things in there, I don't know if that's true. If that was to be determined, would that then make that property not appropriate for development?
I mean, we're not aware of anything like that at this point.
Again, rumors, who knows, but yeah.
Something like that could, could, you know, require some careful planning or, or changes of plans on there, yeah.
Okay, but then theoretically, if we were to move forward with this development right now without that being ready to go, that could be something that doesn't happen for a very long time, if ever?
Yeah, it would take some more time and effort to get the land to be available.
Okay, and then just to clarify some stuff around the, the tax change. So to confirm, this development sort of as it is right now, and obviously it can change, but based on estimates, it would result in $65,000 to $130,000 being put into the tax base, correct? Somewhere in that neighborhood?
Yeah, that's based on looking at comparable type sites from, from the East Cootenay region, as well as some comparable valued properties within Kimberly, that's the calculation that came up with.
Okay, so like less than an FTE potentially? Right, okay, fair enough. And then the, so then residential property owners would be looking at a, I guess, we don't really want to call it a tax break because we're not necessarily going to reduce taxes by that amount, but the, I guess, the tax offset would then be in the neighborhood of $15 to $30? Is that annually or monthly?
Annually.
Annually, so somewhere between $1.25 and $2.50 a month? Yeah, okay, cool, awesome. And then, do we know what the potential tax gain would be, or what the potential tax, taxes would look like if all of these industrial properties were developed industrially and doing industrialized things?
I have not done that analysis at this point.
Okay, so we don't, so we don't have a real good reference point to compare it against?
We could look at that, I think that it's, it's potentially, but it also depends a lot on what type of building is built. A lot of the valuation of a given property through assessment B.C. is determined based on the, the cost of the building there effectively.
So when we're talking, we're talking like the buildings, so like 90% asphalt, we're not collecting any tax on that, we're just collecting taxes on the building?
Factors in the overall improvements to this site, yeah.
Okay, okay. And so then there's some numbers in there that are around wages. So to confirm, this is predominantly a service jobs that this is creating outside of a short period of construction jobs, right? Because it's, that's going to construct it forever. So the number, so just to jump, not to jump, but just since it's sort of relevant, the housing analysis. If we're talking about what's like a considered low affordable housing, they look at the median income of the town, correct? Or of the area?
I think in, if we're referred back to last, the report too, this week, looking at affordable housing in, in Kimberly, it's broken up by income brackets.
Correct.
So for each income bracket within Kimberly, that's how affordable housing rate would be calculated.
But for us, the sort of affordable, the sort of median rate of income, they've calculated at what, like 84,000, is that what I've heard? Is that right? 70, 80, somewhere in there?
I believe it's somewhere in there.
Somewhere in there, okay. So if we have someone working at like 20 bucks an hour, that's like roughly half of that amount of money that they would be making. Whereas the service job would be, it wouldn't actually be at 84, but it would probably be closer to that number in terms of wages, like, because you've gotten, you've got wages for like average service industry wages and then you've got average, like wages for average manufacturing or industrially wages. And if my math is correct, those wages, like industrial wages are higher and thus you would be closer to that median income of town.
Yes, yes, exactly. The, the, the wages reported in the report here come directly from Sycamore, Canada, and they are, they're generalized, so it's not specific to Kimberly here necessarily. But in the, the broader sense of that, yeah, those are how those wages get divvied out amongst different wage earner types or different job types.
Yeah, so there's a bit of a degree of error, but just probably not like a massive one. Yeah, okay, and then, it's okay, just almost there, Don. And then there's some language, it's like pages five and six, there's some language along long-term costs. So do we know or have like a plan for what the infrastructure upgrade life cycle looks like on developments like this? Like in five years, you have to do this, in 10 years, you have to do that?
For the, the site specifically, the, the in-ground or like the water sewer upgrades, those would be built into the, the ongoing maintenance costs for the city. One of the pieces highlighted within the report here looks at some of the upgrades that were spoken to earlier about the active transportation or pedestrian infrastructure. And there, there are likely knock-on effects to that for, for city staff needing to maintain those, those infrastructure pieces, which we don't have clear numbers on, I think that, sort of unless this project moves forward or unless the process moves forward here, we can absolutely look at some of those and speak with operations team to, to, to sort of price that out, but we have not gone through that effort at this point.
Okay, fair enough. And then there's also language around encroachment to existing businesses. Is this something that we anticipate could have a negative effect on businesses, or it's just like there's more traffic because everyone wants a lizard or whatever? It just says that there's some language on page six around encroachment towards the existing businesses and that there could be an impact on the existing businesses. And I'm just wondering what that could look like, because some of these are relatively new, errish businesses, right?
Yeah, so the, the primary point in that, that section is really focusing on the, the knock-on effects, so things like traffic, increased traffic or increased commuter traffic, I guess would be the term for that, as well as odor and noise. So with the development of a retail slash restaurant atmosphere, there is some concern with the properties to the north and, and surrounding this, this property being zoned for M1, so they're currently not zoned for light industrial, they're currently in zone for industrial, which generally leans itself more towards heavy industrial uses or, or medium industrial use, sort of a wider span of those, which often do come with more intensive use that do create noise and odor and do have some of that heavier media traffic, that that can lead to conflicts, especially where, as in the, the report, that diners at a restaurant may be offended by noise and odor and that, that can be specifically a, a point of contention, lead to conflicts that the, the city ultimately gets wrapped up in.
Excellent, excellent. Not for you, wouldn't be excellent for you, just to confirm. And then just since we are talking about that, in the absence of staff time or contemporary data, we kind of don't know what we could potentially be losing on it not having this go into industrial development, correct? Because we've never really done that kind of analysis. And then there's also, there's a lot of text about staff time sort of in all of the phases of this. Just because I'm curious, how much staff time would you, probably a better question for Troy, would you estimate that you're, even just in planning, has been spent on these things over the last couple of years? Like one FTE, two FTEs, if we took all of the little hours here and there and put it into a whatever, like how much time are we looking at?
Well, I'm, no, it wouldn't be a full FTE, but yeah, I mean, there's been, it's been a long time, it's been, you know, two or more people working on the file at a time, you know, reporting to council every few months or so, I guess it's been, and, you know, lots of work in between, but that, yeah, I don't have good F for you.
That's fair, that's fair, it was just, I was more, I didn't know that you would, it was more just curious, because obviously there's other departments that have been involved too with communications and other things that happen through public hearing process. And so then just about the previous community response, so overwhelmingly, the response was against the proposed development at the time, correct? And so if we discounted for like duplicates, because you know some people would have spoken and sent in a letter and signed a thing and da, 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 what would you estimate was like a ballpark number of responses you got individually? Is there any way to actually estimate that without going through accounting and cross-referencing?
Yeah, I, I think I would, I would be remiss to estimate that.
Okay, that's fair.
There are duplicates in there. Yeah.
That is a very fair response, Justin. And then it talks about Modi, because this would have to go through them, so is, because I've never been through this, could Modi sink this whole thing and be like, mm-mm, we don't want this, we don't think this is a good idea, and then the province says no and nobody gets anything?
We don't want to speak for, for their requirements or their, their steps, but I think it's more likely that they'll just make sure that their, their concerns are addressed through that process.
Okay.
They give their consent, yeah.
Have they, have we known them to sink things like this? It's more just.
My experience.
Okay, okay, that's fair, that's fair. And then just, there's a, in this, the report from the fellow, sorry, proponent, developer man, there's a reference of a fee of $3,100 that the developer is paying, sort of processing fee, is that the only money they're paying?
That's the, the initial application fee, there'll be additional applications if, if everything proceeds ahead. But for, for this stage, that's the initial and only application fee so far.
Okay, so when we're talking about things like connection to active transportation network or additional infrastructure being added in like a set of lights that my husband would kill me about and things like that, that would be, who would pay for that?
Those things are to be determined, yeah, I mean, there, there likely be some off-site contributions or contributions to off-site improvements, whether it be, you know, transportation-related or, or other things, but yeah, there, there may be, you know, service connection fees, other, other application fees at other stages of the process, but a little too early to kind of put a number on all that stuff at this point.
Okay, but there's essentially a lot of areas, I guess my question is, is there, are there potentials for taxpayers to wind up picking up the bill for some of this?
I mean, the, the proponent will be expected and required to pay for all of the, the fees that are identified as we go along.
But only in the short term, what about the long term?
What do you mean by that, sorry, like?
Well, like if there's additional, like in five years, we have to do this, in 10 years, we have to do that, there's additional roads that need to be plowed, like who's paying, do they pay for that through their taxes or whatever, or are we all paying for that as additional?
I mean, I think, you know, all we can do through the development process is identify what, what are the, you know, the, the requirements and the needs at the time. You know, they're operationally, you know, it's, it's too hard to predict, I guess, because there'd be other costs like that, but yeah, I mean, like, I think we mentioned about, you know, if there's, if there's new infrastructure built as part of this, you know, there might be an increased operational requirements for that, but you know, if it's, you know, it's likely more roads, but there might be wider roads or more, more turning lanes, that kind of stuff, or pathways, that kind of stuff, so there'd be some operational changes from that, but.
But just to confirm, we don't have like a, an algorithm or something we use right now with any developer that says you're putting in this, that, and the other, and so we want X amount of dollars to put in the pot to take care of that in the long run?
Not in the long run, no.
Okay, I just have one last question, because if I, the last time I checked, the property was still for sale, and my understanding is it's the entirety of the property, including these, these parcels, so if they got some like super great offer and someone's like, here's 20 million cash, off you go, and they decide to go, and I would take it too, I would take it too, I have no judgment, I have no judgment. But if that were to happen, what would then be the status of this application, is the whole process dead, did they pick, does a new buyer pick that up, what does that look like?
I think that would ultimately be up to the, the new buyer, that if there are applications in process on an existing property that, that a new buyer can assume those effectively.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fox. Counselor McCain.
Thanks, guys, for putting together the, the report. Couple of questions. So on the inquiries that we've had, Justin, you just said they're kind of entrepreneurial and, in, in scope, can you give a little bit more detail? Can you give a little bit more detail about, um, the scope and kind of maybe related to the scope of, of this, this proposed development that we have? Just so we have an idea of like what we're looking at rather than just generalities of what's come in. And, and further on that, like, why have these things fizzled out?
Um, so yeah, I think that on the, the scope and nature of, of inquiries that we have had, a lot of them have been focused on sort of a maker space or, or entrepreneurial in the, the, uh, design and small manufacturing type business. I think that, that when looking at some of the other developments that have gone forward in the Marysville Industrial Park recently, similar in scope to those, but maybe not in the same scale. And so, you know, really a smaller one or two person type operation that's looking for, uh, a startup in that realm. And as far as why they have not gone forward, um, are, you know, the best, I can understand it as we haven't had detailed discussions with, uh, proponents who have sort of abandoned those, those proposals, um, would be cost, the, the cost to develop and, and timing within the market where, um, especially the last few years, the, the construction costs have been all over the place. So that would be best guess, but, um, but not, um.
Yeah, that's fair. Um, a couple more. You know, we, we just brought this up in the last round of questioning there, the, the decision to use Statistics Canada for, to, uh, uh, you know, determine, you know, to kind of get a taste of, uh, the commercial wages versus industrial wages. Curious why we, I mean, there's not a lot of industrial currently down there. Um, why didn't we just ask them? I mean, they could at least give us a general sense. And then we would have a more accurate picture rather than using generalized numbers from, that include things like auto manufacturing in, in Ontario that are, you know, six-figure jobs. So.
Nope, certainly. Um, I think that, that that just comes down to it, this being a desktop exercise in, in preparing this report. I think as, as noted in the report, looking at a more detailed, um, review, study of industrial and commercial lands, that would absolutely be, um, staff recommended approach to understanding the local dynamics in terms of wages and, and employment. Yes.
Okay. And the one, the one last question here, um, and this is the part that I guess, if I'm being honest, kind of ticked me off a little bit when I read the report. There was suggestion that we, we, and I don't know who the we is, if it's staff or if it's kind of the royal we of, of the city council, whatever, on, um, providing more focused efforts to, um, to entice industrial development, um, industrial entrepreneurship, whatever the heck you want to call it. So we've, I've been on council for seven years now. Every single year in public budget meetings, we talk about industrial taxes and we've kept them ridiculously low, the lowest in our area by far. Um, we've had, uh, developments that have come forward, like this, who, where I've been on the no side of things to try to support the OCP, to try, try to support staff. In, in, these are public meetings, basically saying, yes, industrial, we're screaming to you, come to us. And they really haven't. So what are those, what, what more do we have to do to send that message out? I'm, I'm, I'm curious because it's, I'm frustrated, you can probably hear my frustration, like, I don't know what more we can do as council by sending signals out there and saying, hey, we're open, industrial, please come. And we're not getting it. So I would like to know what more we could do.
Yeah. I mean, I think, uh, council's showing great leadership in servicing the, these lands on this street, uh, by, by, you know, that's one of the things we were hearing before was that, uh, we do have this industrial area, uh, with industrial zoning and, but they're under service. There was no, there was no, uh, uh, wastewater service for those lands until, I mean, it is just the one street of the three streets there, but, um, that's a big first step. And I know that's a multi, you know, multi-phased program to, to see the rest of it serviced that way. But, um, you know, that, that's a big, a big step in, uh, preparing those lands and, and having industrial service lands available for when those proposals come forward.
Yeah, further to that. So even if we did, and I appreciate that. And I, and that's again, another effort that we put forward, right? To try to entice business to come here. So if we did that, again, maybe the next street down and forgive me, I do not remember what the numbers are of the streets. But there's still privately owned, uh, lots there that would still have to be sold. And I guess, probably not, I was going to say theoretically, probably not theoretically. If those lots are serviced, the privately owned lots, the prices are going to go up on those as well, right? Because now they're service lots versus unserviced. Making it, I'm just getting to a cost prohibitive, um, type of discussion that we were just talking about with the, you know, the current proponents land, right? So I, I appreciate that and I, I still want to go forward. I would like to do as much as we can to try to make it as enticing as possible, but I can see, I just, I would just like to, um, I guess hear some more ideas if we have them besides what we've already done.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Roberts, then councillor Cairns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I have just a couple of comments. Inside of the document, there was reference to the, uh, tax relief that that amount of tax might allow every taxpayer. And to me, that's a bit of a lost leader because in fact, the reason that we want to have commercial properties that are paying taxes is it's so that we have the funding to be able to further develop those industrial areas with the services that they require. That hundred and thirty-five or however many thousand that that is, isn't necessarily going to be of benefit to an individual taxpayer as much as it is going to give us a lump sum of money that we can then get granting for to finish with the servicing of that industrial land. Or to take the opportunity to give direction to staff that we want to take that hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and do whatever we can to get those bench lands certified. We have land. We have spaces that could be utilized. Some of it's brown land and needs, we, we need to pay attention to it. But if we don't direct to do that and we don't find the money to do that, we're sitting on the same dirty city little pot that we've been sitting on for the last 20 years. Somehow or other, we have to take the bull by the horns. When we look at that opportunity to create a, 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 an ambitious place that's a going concern, that's exciting to go to, that serves the needs of the, not only just the people that go to the shop, but it serves the needs of the Marysville citizens, who by the way, we also are expected to re- represent. The town is not all about the platzel. And these people at Marysville would have the opportunity to have some services that heretofore they have never experienced. So if we could create us an exciting hub down there, who have offered in their comments today to put a couple of those small industrial opportunities in their bigger building. And those are the things that are going to grow it. It's like, it's like, I don't know, remember Jesus Christ Superstar? What's the buzz? Tell me what's happening. The minute you get a buzz happening, people are excited and people want to come. And we need to kind of like shift our, ourselves about what does it mean to us as individuals and, and turn that back on. What does that, that taxation ability give us the opportunity to fix and, and to increase and to serve that need for the industrial small business person? There was a young person who came to the, um, uh, hearing that we had before, a young person who didn't own a home, who didn't, uh, he, he, he didn't, um, he, he didn't live alone and that's fine. So he was a young person without, not a taxpayer. And his focus was to holler at us on the stage about all the things that we hadn't done. And we lost our major industry in two thousand and one. And what do you think we've all been doing since two thousand and one? We have been fighting for every piece of industrial development that's clean, that we could possibly pass by our lips. And through different, uh, opportunities by going to trade shows in Calgary, by doing the oil shows, everything we could do to get, to get that industrial base moving. We were able to get the, the, the movement in the service industry because we had that ski hill and because we have those golf courses. And so the service industry is as vital to us, whether it makes a little bit more, less, less money. The fact remains, we, it's vital to us as a tourist environment. And yet somehow or other, we have not been able to develop those, those areas where the, the, uh, uh, industrial growth has happened. And we have tried every kind of opportunity, every time of business, every time of, anytime somebody comes through to those core groups. But they're saying to us, well, gee, we'd really love to come here, but where can we go? And where can we go? They want to actually be able to move into a building and we don't have the buildings there. And we don't have the buildings there because there's no sewer and in some places no water. So it rehues us to take any new tax money and put it into the ground so that we can develop those industrial areas and not sit on our thumb any longer. Uh, I'm sorry, I, I, I'm, I've been wishing to have those diverse, uh, industrial areas, uh, uh, focused on a lot more. I know how hard it is. I know how long it takes and it's not cheap, but it's our only way forward. And, uh, I, I've been thinking about it and worrying about it for 11 years now. And I, and I really think we need to seriously, seriously look at that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Roberts. Councillor Cairns, go ahead.
Thank you. So, uh, just, just to be really clear, um, because it, you know, it could sound like something different that we're talking about here. What, what we have in front of us is about, um, highway commercial strip at the entrance to Marysville, adding a third car wash to Marysville, adding another gas station. Um, when Kimberley already has twice as many per capita of other cities, adding more restaurants, except these are different in that they're highly automated, employ fewer people at lower wages. So I'm just, I just want to highlight that first of all, because the whole super exciting thing, not so sure that's it. The piece that we are really, um, not doing, that I have not seen another community that is not doing this is we don't have an economic development strategy. Um, it's entirely missing. And we have, um, many opportunities. And it's really about coming together and working together on a strategy on how we actually, you know, how are we best serving both our, all of our investors, our, our businesses, our residents, everyone who is here. And we're in a fortunate position that the Kimberley Chamber of Commerce has just recently started to scope out an investment readiness attraction project, which it was successful in, in obtaining a, a rural economic development and infrastructure grant for. And we also have very, a clarity in the staff report around, um, our outdated information and that staff will be seeking direction around, um, in, and industrial and commercial policy review. Uh, we know that our 2020, um, non-residential gap analysis was, was the last, analysis that was conducted and that it identified, um, availability of serviced industrial lands as a barrier. And we also, um, know that there are many funding streams out there. I'm on the board with ECBC, which is the Economic Trust of Southern Interior. There are massive opportunities moving forward when we're willing to partner and to tap into the expertise that's being offered to us. And we have declined that. We have declined that since 2022 when I joined council and when I joined ECBC.
Sorry to interrupt, councillor Cairns. Councillor Roberts, um, and kind of the thread that you're going down here right now is separate and aside from what we're really gathered here to do tonight and as to talk about and have a conversation about the development. So if you could tie that back into, uh, that, that would be appreciated.
I'll do that. I, um.
Conversation for our broader economic development strategies and, or lack thereof, is fodder for another conversation.
Fine. I, um, it's, you're experiencing a lot of frustration amongst council because this is our fourth time around this loop. And we need to stop doing this ad hoc piece and we need to start working on a strategy. And, um, the final point I'll make is, um, is that, you know, this is a perfect example of why strong city policy and regulation is needed upfront to provide certainty and clarity, um, and direction to, to developers and investors, both existing and new, so that we attract the type of development that does align with our vision and priorities set out in our community plan. And it's extremely frustrating to continue to be faced with these proposals that do not align. Kimberley is definitely open to business, but it's business that aligns with our vision and priorities. And this does not.
Thank you, councillor Cairns. Further? Yeah, let's just kind of roll into comments as well. Did you have any questions that you wanted to ask relative to comments?
Yeah.
Kevin, do you have any specific questions? Are we going to move into on the staff report? Okay, we'll, uh, we'll move into broader, broader conversation. Yep. Go ahead, councillor Maguire.
Yeah, so when I looked at this, the first thing that came to mind was the previous development that we looked at, which was strikingly similar. It was on a neighboring lot, similar size, similar style of development. So my mind immediately went to what's the difference here? You know, what, what are we looking at that's different? And the biggest things that are different in my mind are that this site is largely undeveloped. So there's no existing business operating in the area that's being developed, which is a larger financial benefit because we're going from undeveloped property that's essentially being taxed on the bare land to a developed site that we will be receiving revenue from the buildings. Um, the other point of difference was that the previous proposal, and again, you know, these proposals, as was mentioned by staff, are due to change. Like there's no, there's no commitment that these be built as being presented in this first stage. But, uh, but this site includes two drive-throughs on the, on the current site plan. There's a Dairy Queen with a pizza shop and then a separate Tim Hortons and they're both drive-throughs, plus the gas station and plus the car wash. Um, whereas the previous development included a 10,000 square foot, multi-unit, mixed commercial building. So that would be the other big difference, which in my mind, uh, you know, I would have preferred to see more mixed use. It, it, it creates potential for some of these in small-scale industrial type uses that we've been talking about, such as a garage for a small manufacturer. When it comes to commercial versus industrial here, um, largely in this zone, I think that the type of industrial that we're trying to attract largely falls within commercial anyways. I wanted to point that out. And in my mind, you know, I was really trying to get to yes with this. So I was trying to look through a lens of like, how do we get something happening in this area? How do we encourage investment to enter our community? And while I took that lens on, it's still a really hard sell for this corridor. I mean, we're looking at an area that essentially would fit the entire rest of the Marysville commercial businesses. You, you could fit all the rest of the commercial businesses into this area. Um, it's low density. We're talking single-story development here. We're talking large parking areas between lots of driving space. And, you know, even, even if we're looking at industrial use of this, of this area, you know, I feel like we need to get ahead of this and, and, you know, we've, we've already spoken about studies, for example, we've spoken about getting ahead of this and trying to encourage development down there. But I don't see just providing services as enough. I think we do need to start looking at zoning. The M1 zone doesn't encourage the type of things that we even want down there. I mean, we're talking about pretty small shops. And if we want density that actually reduces benefit to our tax base, we're going to need to see increased density. So I'm talking, you know, increased roads down there, more alley access, smaller parcels, you know, encouraging encouraging subdivision. And you know, when I'm looking at this area, if we were to convert to commercial, um you know, we're talking about the size of this lot is essentially a city block. And we're talking about a single development on 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 that entire piece of two, two and a half acres, I think it is, somewhere in that range. And um, you know, the rest of the strip in Cranbrook is half as deep as what's being proposed here with parking right off the front with pedestrian-oriented the development style. And uh you know, this is, this is the entrance to our community. It 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 is important what it looks like. Um I don't disagree with that. I may have a different idea of what I want to see there, but I think it is important to to focus on the zoning in this area and really uh M one industrial isn't necessarily what I want to see there either. So maybe an M two industrial, uh which has been rezoned to include things like engineering businesses and uh kind of that smaller industrial style. Uh what I'm picturing is if we were to develop, like, this is really prime, prime real estate in our community. It's it's easily accessible. Um you've got all the traffic coming in from Cranbrook. Uh and and I think it's prime development at some point, whether it's prime development right now, I don't know. Um maybe this is the only thing that's financially viable right now. But uh I think long term, this is a huge benefit to our community uh from a tax base perspective, from a diversity perspective, from a attractive, but from from creating a attractive community. So that's kind of where I stand. Anyways, I kind of went off on a tangent. I didn't refer to any of my notes. But let's leave it there and uh maybe something will.
We'll come back.
Yeah, exactly.
We'll come back. Thanks, Council uh McGuire. Go ahead, Council McBane.
All right, so I'm gonna stick to my notes, Woody. Uh because I'll get, I'll I'll wander. You know, our our job is um is to maintain the the city's viability through through governance. The last, I would say, two or three years, I would just go back to COVID. The, you know, the strain, the the strain on our revenue versus what we're what we're paying for our services just continues to increase. We just had last week a uh a report, a fire safety report, basically stating we need a new fire station. Um we've had uh recreational facilities reports basically saying that we need to renovate and or replace or one of the two, uh the civic center, uh Marysville and the curling rink. We have wastewater treatment plant we got to pay for. We have other escalating costs. We have a library that desperately needs more funding. And you know, we talk, we're, this is a, this is a revenue versus uh costs discussion that we're having that I'm having right now. I'll I'll touch on it again. I've been on council for seven years. Um supporting the O C P, supporting local businesses, um supporting our staff in in our vision on what we want to do. And there's some things that, you know, have happened and there's other things that haven't happened. I'm I'm frankly frustrated with the with the pace of investment um in the industrial area. And if I might add, we did have, before I was on council, um and I know it was the benchmarks, but it was different, uh or so slightly different, but we did have a manufacturing small manufacturing company proposal. And a very vocal group of people from Marysville came and shot it down because they just didn't want it. Um and that's exactly the business that we're trying to attract. And people came out and and freaked out because we, you know, this was going to, you know, inhibit the beauty or whatever of a place where there was a a former fertilizer plant right across the street from and our city dump. Yes, it's a beautiful spot, but I mean, these are industrial lands. It's usable space within our city. So there's some frustration that you're hearing from me right now. I'm not going to sit here and argue over drive-throughs or trips to Cranbrook because pardon my French, it's like pissing in the wind. You can have one argument and then you can have another argument that it's just going to counter each other. We could be talking about that all day. I think there's opportunities to save trips from Cranbrook to having a a development uh like this in Kimberly where a lot of our money is going uh to Cranbrook. But I also understand the the uh the environmental concerns. I I understand concerns that people have. With respect to the types of businesses and with respect to types of values and and Sue, I'm gonna slightly pick on you a little bit here about like the values question or the values statement. I don't, I it's very, we we got to be careful about, you know, when we say our values, because it's not, everybody isn't the same in town. Everybody's got different things that they think about. And I know that we have a general set of things, but we're when we're talking about things, businesses in terms of we want this business or we don't want this business. We also have a free market. There's freedom of choice. If you don't want to go to a certain business, you don't have to. I I support my own, I I support the businesses in town. I try to spread the spread the love as much as I possibly can. And if there's a place that I don't want to go to, I won't go to it. It's as simple as that. With respect to traffic, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a concern. I think, I think we're, we're getting to the point even with before um this opportu- or this uh this proposal came towards us where we're, you know, we may need some traffic control. I don't, I look at this as not necessarily a barrier. I look at it as an opportunity instead of going to to Modi and and working through things and saying, oh, well, we got to put in their traffic light into town and we're going to have to deal with operational cost down the road. Maybe there's an opportunity to have a roundabout here. It does slow traffic down coming into Marysville, but it does keep things flowing. It's kind of the new wage, new way of of doing things, and I think it's something that we could explore that wouldn't uh be a huge operational cost down the road. With respect to this proposal, um and and staff, you know, if we do, if if this goes forward, or at least to a public hearing, we, you know, working towards a new zoning. Um one thing I would like the the proponent to consider as well as staff is um, you know, some design parameters about what we want things to look like. You know, Fernie has done a really good job um with that. If you drive through there, they've got a a mixed bag of of local businesses, franchises and all these things, but they've done a really good job of, you know, ensuring that uh the, you know, the 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 businesses look a certain way. So that would be a preference of mine to uh to explore. I also think, and this is going to be beyond this proposal, but I think we, I think it would, we really need as a city to invest and spend the time into what uh development cost charges or development cost structure, cost structure would look like. I think it's going to be really important. I think as more developers come in, we want to make sure that the downstream costs uh of the effects of of current development happening um are going to be covered in some kind of way. Okay, and now's the last of my little diatribe here. Um I've pushed back on this before. I have a lot of concerns. I I told these proponents, I uh I did not like the comparison to Invermere, and I do not want our town to be like Invermere. I vehemently do not want our town to be like Invermere. I do not want our town to have a Cranbrook strip. I don't think this one proposal does that. I think it's, it's, you know, it it's uh, it's got some components of that, but it doesn't, it's not a a mile-long strip of the same thing over and over again, and it doesn't uh completely densify uh our downtown core like what's happened in Invermere. I don't like how in the report and how we've discussed today about, you know, saying twenty dollars, thirty dollars, whatever, off of somebody's residential tax bill, whether it's a direct offset or not, is like nominal. We go through budget discussions every single year. And Jim goes to his managerial staff, trying to find as many dollars as we can possibly save people's residential taxes. What's the number one thing that we hear from people in town? Outside of the seasonal uh snow removal process, everybody, nobody likes that. It's residential taxes. And here's an opportunity in front of us to potentially lower residential taxes. And if I look at thirty dollars, yes, it may seem not like a lot of money in absolute dollars, but it's still like one percent. Right? On an average person's residential taxes. And if we got a one percent savings when we're going through our budget deliberations, we would be very happy with that. We would be very happy with thirty dollars off of this, the the pool assessment every year. Right? So it's frustrating that we we're using percentages in 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 some instances and absolute dollars in some instances to try to, you know, persuade in one direction or the other. I love the way our town is. I love the character of our town. I walk this town every day. And I don't want it to change dramatically. I don't think this will make it change. I have, again, I have fought, I've been on the the no side, I guess you could say, of this development, and my argument always was to buy some more time for industrial investment to come, not because I don't like McDonald's, not because I don't like gas stations or whatever. These are free market questions. Yes, we have these things already. Okay? If you have one restaurant already, another restaurant comes, well, you can't just tell that one no because we already have too many or whatever, like, let the market decide. If people don't want to go, they won't go. But the bottom line is costs are not going down. There's very few ways for us to generate new revenue, whether you think this is a lot of money from gener- generated from this proposal or not. I guess I'm just, I'm to the point where I feel like I've been patient. I feel like I've been supportive. And um I see the costs of things going up. And the one last point, uh that I skipped over and I can't believe I did. Um we had an ICE, we had a an ICE report that came in uh just recently this year. One of the statements in there was for an eight-team hockey tournament, for every eight-team hockey tournament that happens on a weekend, it can generate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of revenue for our town. But why aren't we having those tournaments? One, we don't have accommodation. We have short-term rentals in town, but we don't have a hotel. And there's some chicken and the egg things that happen to happen here. In order to attract a hotel that can house a type of hockey tournament that we'd be looking for, if we wanted to build or renovate our new facilities, we have to have some of these commercial spaces that maybe we don't like as much as other things. I completely understand that. But before a, you know, Holiday Inn Express or whatever will even express interest in a town, we have to have some of these things in place. And that can lead to some economic development down the road. Now, does it mean that uh you're only because you you only want to do this because your hockey teams only go to Tim Hortons? No. Tim Hortons and places like that do help service those types of events. But at the same time, those are parents coming in with money and they're going to the, they're going to come up to the plat, so they're going to spend money in our local businesses. They're not just going to go to these you know, more uh bigger chain fast food franchises. I mean, those are there to help spur on other investment in order to create availability for those events, which in turn will benefit our town. So so I I'm to the point now where I'm very comfortable moving this forward to the next part of our public hearing. Um I appreciate all of the pushback that that people have, that people send in. And uh yeah, I I I I don't want to lose the character of our town. I will always fight to to maintain the character of our town and um to prevent it from becoming a, you know, uh franchised retail uh hub or strip or whatever the heck you want to call it. Um but I don't think one proposal um is going to uh is going to change that. So.
Thank you, Council McBane. Uh just before we go to Council Fox, uh Council Dunaback, did you want to have anything to say? Go ahead.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments to Council McBane's comments, and they're all from a place of love, Jason. Um the first one is about the comment around breaking it down into what it does for someone's dollars, and I will die on this hill that that actually is really important to people. You might be able to do that math off the top of your head and figure out really quickly what it works out to in your tax base. Lots of people can't. And one of the most common questions I get from people is, I don't understand what this means for me. When we're talking about a one percent or a five percent or a percentage of this or that, they don't understand what that means to them. And I think it's great that you do, but I think it's our job to remember it's not about us. Um the other thing, comment I wanted to make was around the free market comment, because I find this incredibly problematic because we are not comparing apples to apples. It's sort of the equivalent to saying like, we're gonna play, Kevin and I are gonna play trucks, but Kevin has a Tonka truck and I have that thing at Sparwood that you can get your picture taken beside. We both have a truck, but are we, we're not comparing apples to apples. So it is incredibly disingenuous to talk about free market in this context. And then um the last comment I actually want to make is towards Mayor McCormick. I really don't think it's fair to jump down Counselor Cairns or dump on Counselor Cairns about her comments around economic development because both Counselor McGuire and Counselor McBane have also brought that up, and it's pretty clear that that's a big part of why this keeps coming back up. So, yeah.
Yeah, thanks. Uh in fairness, that was after we had the first round, questions for the proponent and staff. And then it's question of comments, uh broader comments from council. Um so um I guess I've got a couple of things that might as well go down here before we turn it over to Counsel Dunaback. I'm going to focus uh my comments specifically on land use because that's really what this uh what this particular proposal is is about. And it's what the the zoning change is about. And I appreciate that the use case is closely tied uh to um uh to zoning or land use. Uh they're different sides of the same coin. So I just, I want to stay focused on the land use for now. So first off, uh the commercial versus industrial in the Kimberly context. So in Kimberly, we have a grand total of twenty-one vacant industrial parcels. And we have six vacant commercial parcels. Now, you can, you know, parse the industrial projects any way you wish, but we have a preponderance of industrial versus commercial. There has been virtually no commercial building in the last twenty years. I mean, we have a new Savon store, uh but that replaced the old one. Arguably, we have the Nelson Dentist Building, uh but that's really a mixed use with, you know, some residential above. You know, Cory's Pet Grooming uh was a new uh commercial building that that we put up. And most recently, we have the two Taiyi spaces in their mixed-use uh development down in uh Marysville. Any way you wish to look at this, commercial is the dearest here in Kimberly. The zoning that we have down along the highway um goes back, uh predates the closing of uh the closing of the mine and goes back to the Kaminko Business Support Days where there were not just the mine, but all the the fertilizer plant and all of the other uh the other businesses that Kaminko had up in the industrial area. And uh what was expected to build were businesses, light industrial businesses that surrounded and supported Kaminko. And I'm, I certainly wasn't here at the time. I'm not sure there was anybody around the table that was. But I think it's reasonable to assume that um that ended up as a light industrial uh zoning uh because of what it was perceived to be the demand at the time. So the highway corridor um is for larger commercial, as is seen in virtually every community. Now, um e- every community across the province. This does not define those communities. Um and I will only use uh Fernie, Golden and Revelstoke as three examples of um resort municipalities within the uh East Cootnes and the Shushwap region here. Uh I don't think anybody would look at any of those and say they're defined by, you know, the commercial development that's happened along along their highway. The other comment I want to make on this is that um in those communities, um Fernie has a good example. Um, when, when all of the um commercial uh uh popped up on their highway, the Mom and Pops in downtown Fernie did not disappear. And in fact, tourism has broadened that market to the benefit of the Mom and Pop stores as well. Everybody benefits when the market grows. I guess the second point I want to talk to is industrial opportunities. Of the ten major municipalities in the East and West Cootines, the largest industrial contribution to tax revenue uh is the city of Cranbrook. Not a big surprise. Uh, Cranbrook's the biggest city. It's got, it's a service center, you know, for the region. The total amount of light industry tax revenue that goes to their variable tax as a percentage of their variable tax is one point two percent. They are, they are really the only one that is over one percent. There's actually two um municipalities that have zero contribution from light industrial. And not surprisingly, um, commercial is much, much higher in uh most of these municipalities. Uh, with the um, well, not even with the exception, I guess, trail would be the only one, but they have sixty percent major industry uh tax revenue coming in trail. So if we take a look, what that, what that really means is that um the, the light industry opportunities we have are few and far between. They're exceptions. They're one-offs. They're not trends uh that, that we can go through. And as was mentioned earlier, I think it was Counselor McGuire mentioned that most of what we have referred to as light industry is actually commercial. Uh, a commercial by uh, by definition. Um, a good example of that is the Cootney Outdoor Recreation Collective. So to be clear, I have been a champion of outdoor recreation as a means of building industrial tax base for the last five years. I got involved in Core uh for that specific purpose. And it's been five years now that I have been observing as that has grown. And really what we've discovered is that um most of the eighty or so businesses that are part of that uh are really commercial. They sell what they make. Fifty of the eighty members, a significant majority are owner-operated. And many of those owners have day jobs with very few secondary jobs that are attached to them. These are passion projects for most, most of these businesses. And fifteen of those are positioning to scale. They're actually working with a business advisor to figure out how to do that. And about another fifteen are early-stage startup. And all thirty of those really are renting primarily uh with a, with a uh, with an ambition to perhaps build when they are ready, in fact, to scale. So in order to um, in order for us to position ourselves, even when these businesses begin to scale, to, to, to be here, like to attract here, either startups or expansions, we, we have to be investment-ready. Um, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about investment-ready in a minute, but if you're not, um attraction isn't gonna happen. The developer experience that we have here in Kimberly with respect to inquiries and demand uh are commercial, uh not industrial. Uh, we've seen that this particular property uh that Ghost Rider is on right now has been for sale for a year. Uh, we've had no uh inquiries. And the other inquiries that have come in from a couple of other developers that I, that I polled in town related to uh doctors, dentists and other commercial. Commercial is the future. We need to prepare for that. So investment-ready lands, what does that mean? It means lands that are fully serviced. And they are ready for permit and building. Uh, businesses are not developers and time to cash flow is absolutely critical for these businesses. They can't wait two years to develop a property or wait for services to go in. They need to get in and begin to build and get the cash flow as quickly as they can. The sad thing is we have no land like that in Kimberly except on three hundred and fifth uh where the land, oh, by the way, on three hundred and fifth is owned by this particular proponent. Investors can't wait five years while we get our act together on all of this. Uh, the city needs to catch up. Uh, not put everything on pause until we're ready to be able to accept that investment. So we, we have had virtually no commercial service buildings in uh, in the last twenty years. The population has grown by twenty-five-hundred people, which is a forty-two percent increase in our population. And uh, uh with an increase in population comes an increase in demand for services. And so where are they getting these services? Cranbrook is where they're getting the services. Traffic to Cranbrook, uh, which is a huge commercial alternative bleeds money from Kimberly. There are um seven thousand trips a day that go between here, and that's a combination of commercial, visitor and resident uh traffic. And it's important to note that people spend money where they are, especially visitors. And we want to keep them here. We don't want them to go to Cranbrook for retail unless it's absolutely necessary for them to do that. So I guess the bottom line is the, the retail anchors uh can either be located here or located in Cranbrook. And if they're in Cranbrook, we're gonna lose that, uh, we're gonna lose that revenue, significant revenue. My last comment is around commercial, uh, around tax diversification. So it came up earlier, the difference between the industrial and the commercial. The big thing is that commercial taxation is two point five times residential and industrial. It is absolutely the fastest way for us to diversify our uh tax base. And with eighty-seven percent currently residential, only twelve percent commercial, residential reliance of that percentage uh limits our financial flexibility. And it also limits the investment for things like hotels to get into our community, because commercial is what drives those visitations. So we have an opportunity to work with this developer, this came up earlier, to create the best possible outcome and achieve multiple objectives as we go forward. I think it's important to note that um we as council represent both sides of any issue or opportunity. And the public hearing is there for both sides to be able to participate, which is really the next step that we need to get to with this particular proposal. Kevin, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just make this really short and sweet here. We currently have a project of a wastewater treatment plant that hasn't even had a shovel in the ground yet. And is rising costs daily and we're losing key components of people that were uh heavily vested uh in that as well. Um, we've got major developments going all over town right now that have huge impact to our infrastructure that uh um we need to focus on. And to add something of this nature right now, I think could be put in the cart um way before the horse. Um, and we need to focus on what we have. I love the idea of the um the industrial grounds. I, I look at it as a, as a, as a raw piece of where we can, you know. I don't know why we haven't looked into um amalgamating with some builders and building essentially race-ready shops. So uh, you, your grandson could set up a carpentry shop and start building custom cabinets. Or um somebody could come in and start making custom bike frames uh and have a place where they can live, in a place where they can play, in a place where they can sell their stuff. I just see this vision of this awesome timber frame steampunk rad place where everybody has a job, has the Kimberly lifestyle that I grew up with here. You did too. Um, that freedom to express as an independent rather than sponsoring big corporate to come to our town and destroy what we've worked so hard to build. That's all I'll say on that.
Thank you, Counselor Dunneback. Go ahead, Counselor Cairns.
So I just wanted to address a couple of points. Um Mayor McCormick, you said we're you know, in areas like in Vermeer where um these developments have gone in, I, I just, I want to point out, you mentioned uh where the market is grown, that everyone benefits, but we're not growing our economic pie here. We're simply splitting that same market pie into smaller pieces by rezoning to duplicate existing services. And we are very different from that intersection, which is one of the busiest intersections in rural B.C. So, you know, and we're not on a thoroughfare. We're not um a pit stop along the way. So very different type of situation. We get nothing near that type of traffic. And this isn't increasing our market. This is actually just splitting our existing market in a lot more ways and actually probably just undermining um well, other gas stations that are just gonna go out of business. They're poised to go that way. It's part of why it's so expensive here is because they pump so little gas. So it's um just more contaminated sites, like, you know, it sounds very glowing, all of the words around this piece. We are talking about a third car wash in Marysville. We're talking about an additional, I think it's now number six in terms of gas stations. And we're talking about a couple of drive-throughs and a takeout. This is not, you know, this is not a glowing, exciting uh venture. So, and in terms of um Counselor McBane and the comment about uh values and priorities, those are the values from our community plan that I'm talking about. I'm talking about our policy. I'm not talking about my, my personal ones, although that, mind you, align. And then uh this is not going to help us pay for those things that we need. It's a very inefficient land use. That's been spelled out in many different venues. It was actually an example of an extremely inefficient land use pattern. And Kimberly was, this example was used at our Association of Cootine Boundary Local Government Meeting um presenting and talking about what we've learned from this kind of nineteen-eighties-style ring development and what it does to a town. It's, let's learn. Let's not just launch ourselves off that same cliff and become everywhere America. And uh, and then my final comment is this is not a good return to our community in terms of taxes collected per acre, living wage jobs, supporting local suppliers, generating more productivity and our regional and local economic development.
Thank you, Counselor Cairns. Um, I guess um you know, in terms of um Counselor Dunneback, you're painting a picture, uh, which is awesome. It's investor-driven. We can't paint the picture and wish that it's gonna happen. We have to have people with money coming to town and prepared to invest in that. And when we, as a council and as a staff, create the uh, the situation where we are going to select who comes and who doesn't, it drives investment away. You can. Go right ahead.
What, what drives investment away? I don't know if you've driven through the industrial park lately. Have a drive.
Uh, as a matter of fact, I have.
Yeah?
Yes.
It's horrible. It is, it's a disgrace.
Absolutely correct.
The fact that that isn't a paved thoroughfare with water and sewer for everyone. The fact that we have had investors supply their own water and sewer so that they can bring money to town from this town. The people of this town built that. And they're doing business there. And it's gross. I'm embarrassed for them. I'm embarrassed for us. Why, why don't we have a platform of awesomeness? And then they'll come. It's really simple.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further comments? All right, hearing none. Gonna call the question on receipt. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. So um the purpose of the process that we're in, we've received the report. Um, the next step is to direct staff to prepare a draft bylaw that we can bring forward for a first reading and get to, uh, once first reading, we can get to a public hearing. And uh, I think it's absolutely critical that we afford a public hearing to anybody who is willing to invest in our community. So I'm going to uh, uh, put that motion on the floor that council directs staff to prepare for council's consideration of first reading at an upcoming meeting. Uh, the amending bylaws for the property designated in the report. First to be the official community plan, bylaw twenty-six hundred, including Schedule A land use plan and bylaw eighteen fifty, including Schedule A zoning map. All as identified in the uh, in the staff report. Can I have a mover, please? Counselor McBane moves. Seconder? Counselor Roberts seconds? Further discussion on this? Go ahead, Counselor McGuire.
I believe we're talking about a proposal that would essentially allow the existing uh development plan from the developer. So we're looking at zoning to rezone this lot. Allow for that. And at this point, um I'm gonna have to vote against this motion, simply because we went through this process very recently and uh my sentiments haven't changed a whole lot. I agree with a lot of what you said previously, Mayor McCormick, but I just come to different conclusions on this specific uh lot. Um, so to me, unless we're looking at a very different um commercial zoning, so I, you know, with higher, I, I don't know what that looks like exactly. You know, setback requirements, I'm, I'm thinking um higher density, multi-story, something along those lines. Uh, I don't support the motion as it stands. And I feel like at this point, the proposal is just so far away from what I would want to see as far as commercial development in that area, that I just can't support it at this time.
So uh, fair enough. Um, to be clear, the um the motion and the process is around the commercial zoning, not the specific development. And in fact, the specific development will have to go forward with a development permit application at which time council would then uh based on whatever negotiations uh staff have with, with the proponent, uh, what that might look like going forward. The only thing that's been put forward is the process right now is a is, you know, is a preliminary proposal. So in any event, whatever goes down there, this, as I said, we're trying to focus on uh, on the zoning here, the commercial zoning. And that's really, that's really what we're, what we're moving forward with. Any further, uh, any further, uh, did you want to make any comments about that? Nope, you're good. So uh any further? Sandra, you good?
Yep.
Okay, so I am going to uh call the question on the motion that's put forward. All those in favor? All those opposed? Counselor uh Fox, Dunneback, Cairns and McGuire are opposed. Uh, the motion is defeated. All right, um we're done. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm wondering if it would be possible to request an ethics investigation into how the city and council has dealt with these drive-through requests since the very beginning. The reason being, I feel like I have been perhaps targeted, bullied, intimidated to try to not show up. I don't think Kevin or Counselor Dunneback would disagree. I think he's been put in a similar situation. I received a call at four-thirty on the day of the bylaw vote to ban drive-throughs, telling me that a um, there was concerns from a community member that I had a conflict of interest and perhaps I should recuse myself. I was told that the city did their due diligence and looked into this with legal and they agreed that there was a possibility I had a conflict of interest. Four-thirty, the day of the vote, what on earth am I going to do to defend myself against that? And I believe Counselor Dunneback has, had similar things. This also happened on Friday when I received a call at five-thirty, six o'clock. I didn't answer it. I'm gonna speculate. I know what the intent of that call was. You're not giving me a chance to defend myself. It's an intimidation tactic. It feels like manipulation. We have seen um numbers of these things pop up on the agenda where letters in support of drive-throughs are published and letters that are not in support of them are not published. And I've never received a good answer as to why that happens. I don't think I'm out of line to ask, can we look into how we're handling this and ensure we're meeting all of the um appropriate legislative things that we should?
Yeah, I, I think that's not really a conversation for, for this venue. Certainly something we can have a discussion about. Sorry, at some other point.
Sorry, at some other point.
How do we make it?
Process that was followed.
I think it's, I don't think I would be the only person who has serious concerns about how this has been handled.
So we'll, we'll follow this up post-meeting.
Yeah, start, start with, come and talk to me about it if if you're the council for this concern, certainly Counselor Dunneback can attend as well and just talk about the process it, it was undertaken and, you know, any, any concerns you have with that, and we'll kind of go from there.
Fair enough.
Did we vote on German? You moved, yep. Counselor Maguire seconds. Counselor McBane moved. All those in favor? Right, we're done. Thanks, folks.